Okay, well, good evening and welcome everyone to the January 8th, 2025. I didn't flub on that one, 2025 Planning Board Meeting, the town of Dudley. First order of business is to note that this meeting is being recorded. The second would be our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
With us this evening, we have Mr. Durgan, Clerk of the Board, Mr. Edmiston, Member, Mr. Horn, Member, and zooming in, our Chairman, Mr. Steve Watroba. I am the Vice Chair for -- I hear the wall speaking to me, so I guess that means he's -- he is with us this evening, at least his image is anyway. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Hearing you loud and clear, yes. All righty. Our second order of business will be the approval of minutes for the December 11th, 2024 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I had opportunity to read the minutes as presented, the excellently written minutes on my head, and I make a motion that we approve them as submitted.
Second? All right, motion made and seconded. Any comments, discussion? All in favor? Aye. And that is the four. I have two copies here, signature, I'll pass those around. All right, next on the agenda is an A and R for Sawmill LLC, 35 Sawmill Road. Gentlemen, we should have copies of that, I believe. Is there anyone that doesn't appear that we have anyone in the audience that would speak to any questions that might pertain to this, so I believe we're left to our own devices.
Mr. Chairman, the engineer representing Sawmill Road LLC is on his way. Is it possible I ask the Board's indulgence to maybe move to the next item, revisit?
All right, any objections? All right, I think we will table this for the moment and come back to it at a later time. The gentleman has arrived. Next item on the agenda is ADU, Accessory Dwelling Units, Section 8 of Chapter 150 of the Acts of 2024. Thank you for giving us the meaning of the initials. Acronyms and initials get confusing at times. Having the real word is beneficial. I do have, it might take me a minute to pull it up, an email from, hello, Jane Wirick at the CMRPC, and what they are looking to do is to offer us assistance in drafting a, what would have to be a new zoning bylaw in order to be compliant with this new act, which I believe is something that was sponsored by the Executive Office of Housing and, I'm forgetting the name of the terminology, something communities, livable communities, I think is their terminology. You might remember reference to them at the last meeting. They are the folks that reviewed our application when we sought a grant for the master plan. If you give me a moment, indulge me for a bit, we'll see if I can't pull that up.
What are you pulling up, Richard?
Jane Wirick had sent an email, I think, I know I shared it with Mr. Watroba, and you may have had a copy of it as well. A little bit of luck, we can dig this up. As we can see, a little bit of luck, we can dig it up. You happen to have that by chance?
I don't have access, I don't remember getting.
It would have been attached to another email. It was not, it was a follow-on. Okay. We're going to get it shortly, I think. Just as an aside, I see everybody is now using our DudleyMA.gov email addresses. If that keeps us linked for the moment. That is what I'm attempting to bring up right now.
So this takes effect February 2nd?
Okay, here I have, actually, David, earlier this month, the 3rd of January. She writes, she understands the planning board is meeting on the 8th, please let me know in regards to be part of an ADU bylaw assistance project through the DLTA. Applications are due next week, and the Physical Development Committee will be reviewing applicants, applications at their meeting on the 16th. In other words, this apparently gives us an opportunity to partner with others as we develop a zoning bylaw that hopefully will pass muster with the Attorney General and the powers that be in Boston. I don't know if, I suspect that we would need to make a motion to approve that thought, or to go along with that, or whatever perhaps ideas members may have. Again, we have in our zoning bylaws, the language is a bit, I think the same thing, but not the same exact terminology, we have reference to accessory use apartment in our zoning bylaw. This obviously is new terminology, so at the very least, our bylaw would have to be changed to accommodate the current terminology.
While I would agree that we definitely need to update our zoning and our zoning regulations to encompass this, this new ADU situation, I think at this particular time, I think we're woefully understaffed with no town planner. You know, I don't think we're in a position on to take this at this time. I'm not saying that isn't something I want to revisit, I'm just wondering whether or not, you know, I think you just said the deadline for the application is next week.
Right.
And it's like, well, if we somehow scramble together and get the application in for next week, where do we go from there? We've got, you know, limited resources here right now.
That we do. I would maybe ask that the Board give tentative approval to this, and I would inquire of Jane what was expected from the town in terms of resources, in terms, you know, as far as the participation aspect is concerned. If it, if it requires a planner.
You want to be the tip of the spear on this, Richard? I don't have a problem with that. If the rest of the Board feels that way, then we could go that route.
Well, quite honestly, if it requires, you know, some number of hours and/or lengthy involvement, which I hope is not the case, or it requires a level of expertise such that I can't get to, maybe we will end up eventually passing on it, but I think we might want to take advantage of the opportunity to get this thing right the first time out of the box, because again, we're going to have to go to town meeting with it, it's going to have to get approval from the Attorney General, so there are two hurdles there, and we've got a, something that will pass muster, we're certainly better off than trying to hit and miss and then come back at it a third time or more. That's a long way of saying, I guess I'd like to try it, or see if we can't try it.
I would make a motion that we can allow Mr. Clark to work with Central Mass Regional Planning to see if it's possible that we could get included on this, what is it, ADU?
ADU, I guess we're looking for compliance with this ADU, Section 8, Chapter 150.
ADU bylaw that they're proposing?
If that was the motion, I can definitely second it.
Again, this is something that we're going to have to do, I don't know whether we can do it at some, I don't know how far down the road we can do it before the state comes looking for it. If again, we want to continue with the master planning process, this is something that I'm sure the folks that wrote this will be looking to see that we've been compliant.
It just seems that the CMRPC is going to be busy helping different communities, working with us right now, so why not join the, join the group and have their work on it? They could probably do it more efficiently now than they could in six months.
Right.
That's my line of thought.
All righty, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty, and I will get back to the Board. One of the problems I think we're running into here is our schedule right now has us meeting at best every two weeks, and some of these things are coming up like the day after tomorrow. We don't have opportunity to really meet and discuss or consider, it's, you've got to do it now or you're never going to get it, kind of situation, so hopefully the CMRPC calendar will be a little more lenient as we get into the year. All righty, thank you, gentlemen. Would you, sir, you've just joined us, would you be the person in regards to Sawmill Road?
Yes, sir.
All right, we had that on the agenda and deferred for the time being, as Mr. Watroba mentioned, you were on the way. Now that you're here, could you introduce yourself? Do you need to sign in? I suspect.
I did sign in, you're signed in, sir.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Joe Levecq, I'm the surveyor that works for Stephen Watroba and also prepared the A and R plan that's before you tonight. As I'm sure the Boards are aware, Mr. Watroba has done some recent development in that area where he currently owns land. The current address for this property.
I just want to recuse myself before we go any further, my apologies, Joe. Mr. Clark, I'm going to shut off my video, mute my audio until we're done with this portion, so I'm recusing myself from this part.
Okay, thank you.
So, as I was saying, the, the current address is 35 Sawmill, Sawmill Road, the property's currently owned by Sawmill Road LLC, which is essentially Mr. Watroba, who just recused As I was saying, he recently did the Sophie Way subdivision just to the east of the proposed lot that's before you tonight. What we're proposing is to just create another building lot that's part of that existing house lot that's located at 35 Sawmill Road. It's a, you know, conforming lot, has the area and frontage necessary with the current zoning bylaws, there's no wetlands on the property, and just a pretty simple one lot plan.
So does that mean that Lot B is being added to that house, the smaller area in the front?
Lot B is being taken out of that house lot. Yep, so currently, as it exists today, the land that's encompassed within the proposed Lot B that's shown on the plan is actually encompassed with the house lot. So we're just taking a little bit of frontage and some area to create another building lot, and then the remaining land also conforms to the current zoning requirements to remain a buildable lot.
So the passage where, that little strip of land to the left of that house lot would be the excess tract in the back lot?
Correct, it does bottleneck down for a short portion, so it's kind, it's almost, not by definition under zoning, but it's almost like a rear lot, kind of, but it does have the required frontage.
The triangular areas to make sure it has the proper frontage.
Correct.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Do you know what the smallest portion of that neck-down area is? Is it 40 feet, 50 feet?
I believe it's 20 feet.
It's 20 feet?
Yeah. So while it does get a little tight there, it does, under the current zoning, from my knowledge, you know, you could put in the required size driveway, and there was nothing in the zoning, like a required lot width, for example, a certain number off the feet from the, from the right-of-way line.
Our zoning does say you need to have your driveway at least two feet off the property line.
Correct, yep. So you'll, you'll have excess of two feet on both sides of the required driveway width.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like there's two waivers requested, it's going to be 5E and 5J. 5E is for the topography of land at a contour of two-foot intervals, and 5J is a profile of the existing grades for the proposed access to the lot. I make a motion that we could waive 5E and 5J for the plan of land.
I can't tell the Board that it is a rather smooth transition from the existing way all the way back to where the proposed house would likely be.
Do I have an existing grade already to the driveway in the back?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Horn, so we have a motion to waive E and J. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second to waive E and J. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, they are so waived, the A and R itself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the A and R plan for 35 Sawmill Road, D book 38195, page 56, Dudley Tax Map 113, parcel number 65.
All right, gentlemen, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You have it, you have a mile on over there?
Yes, sir. And I have the five paper copies.
Yeah, we need that on that thing.
Oh, the mile's over here, sir.
Oh, we're going to sign away everything here.
All right. Have at them.
You're making, you're doing, putting the rest of this to shame.
I, your checklist says five, so I gave you five. Those are for you, sir.
All righty, I think this, Mr. Watroba can rejoin us at this point.
Do you need to sign those too, Richard?
I'm sorry?
The A and R, the, the county clerk, do you need to sign those?
All right, you need the.
Yeah, the two copies of the Form A.
Yeah. Okay. Looking at member's signature, you just need a single one?
Yeah.
All right. This goes to.
I believe the check is in the office, man, for the.
Lori, right?
With Lori Smith?
Oh, the check's in the office, the Plan Board office.
Check.
I told this in the vote.
Okay, this goes to Lori, right?
Yes, I'll take the whole.
All right.
I just had two, one for us to have an original and one for the town clerk.
If there's anything missing on those, let me know, and we'll take care of that. All right, Mr. Watroba has rejoined us at this point. Next item on the master, on our agenda, rather, is the Master Plan Steering Committee Volunteer Public Notice, and I did see something online, and I don't have that in front of me at the present time, I don't know if that was distributed or posted on the town website, looking for volunteers.
Oh, okay, I think Steve was going to.
Speak to that.
Speak on that, because I was going to get ready to put something on the website, and then I think Steve wanted to talk about postponing the search?
That wasn't this particular thing, Laura, but I did want to mention, I know that the last meeting we had asked Jacefa to check to see if the notice for volunteers of the Master Plan Steering Committee was posted, so that's the only thing I want to follow up on. So as far as you know, Richard, you did see it posted?
I thought I saw something, but I will have to go back and check, I don't know whether it was something that was proposed and not posted, or actually made it to a position of being posted. I did notice that in regards to posting, if you look at the town calendar on the website, individual meetings are identified by date, ours don't show up. For example, you will see the Library Board of Trustees, if you look at the calendar date, 14th of January, it will be identified as a meeting on that date, and ours don't ever make that list or make that calendar posting. I'm not sure how that happens, whether that's something that planner was handling, or he's gone through the town clerk's office or not, but again, I'll have to, I'll have to go back and take a look at this.
So what Laura was just referring to, my thoughts were regarding the whole master plan, without a planner, again, I don't want to be putting the pedal for the metal, so to speak, and we get into a position where we still don't have a town planner, and we're trying to work on a master plan for the town of Dudley. I mean, obviously, a town planner is a key, has a key role in that, so I certainly don't have a problem with us looking for somebody on the Steering Committee, because volunteers are far and few between in town anyways, but just the whole overall feeling of, are we, are we even in a position where we're prepared to move forward with this? Until we resolve this planner issue, I think that's, that's what I'm getting at, I guess. There's a lot of things that we're going to have a real difficulty with until we have a bona fide town planner.
I agree, I think we need to pump the brakes a little bit. If you look at the town website again, it looks, it identifies that at present we have an interim town planner, and it gives a phone number to make an appointment. Well, we don't even have an interim town planner at this point, I don't know.
I'll see that that's updated.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, if someone were to make a call, who would they make an appointment with?
Not me.
All right.
Assistant Town Administrator.
I think Mr. Horn just volunteered, oh. But realistically, we don't have anyone at the other end of that phone, be it appointment or phone call or whatever, and you're right, until this is resolved, there is no point of contact, so somewhere along the way, we have to have a resolution in the form of a body that is taking on that function. Again, we could put the posting out there and hope we get some interest, and just ask those folks to kind of sit tight until this is resolved, and appreciate their good intentions, and we'll get back to you.
At this point in time, too, the letters that were to go out to the boards for the members from like the other, like Economic Development Committee, I think it was, Parks and Rec, those letters have not been sent yet either, requesting them to appoint somebody.
Oh, okay. So I, well, all of those boards were very much dependent on the resource that was Mr. Scanlon or the town planner, so everything is kind of at a standstill at this point. Well, again, hopefully, someone is out there just chomping at the bit to get their application in, and that will be soon. So we'll keep this as a, I think, agenda item, and like some of our standard business, it will probably be with us for a while, but just as a reminder that this is somewhat active, or will be active at some point. Any other thoughts or discussion on that, Mr. Durgan?
Is this a planner position already posted online and on Indeed?
Planner position, as I understand it, has been posted on the town website, both here, and I believe in Spencer, and it has been posted with CMRPC. I posted it earlier this afternoon with mass planners. I don't know, from what I understand, an email I got earlier.
I was CC'd on that email that Richard was talking about, from the Assistant Town Administrator. I responded, she hasn't had a chance to see it yet probably, but I responded exactly with the same thoughts, David, why can't we get this on Indeed, you know, Monster.com, all of those, those big sites out there, because, I mean, honestly, if it's posted on the town website, I'm not sure who's going to be in the market looking for that job that's going to be looking at the town of Dudley website, so we might as well just, you know, put it in the elevator.
Well, the town uses Indeed, don't they?
It wasn't indicated as one that was in use at this time for this position. It may be, and she omitted it for whatever reason, but to Mr. Watroba's point.
Actually, the search today on Monster and a lot of those for town planner, and didn't find anything anywhere near here posted, so.
But to your point, though, I mean, if somebody's in Winchton, then what's, what is the opportunity, the possibility they're going to look at the Dudley town website?
Right.
There's 350 other towns and municipalities in the state, and they're going to pick Dudley as one that they're going to actually visit looking for a job? Well, I guess the lottery is there, it has better odds. In any event.
I was hearing about a town planner that is nearing retirement, that I was told about, that may, might be interested in doing part-time work after they retire, so I don't want to go too far into that, because I was spoken with that person, I've just, I learned about this person, and, you know, if that bears fruit, I'll definitely share it with the Board, but maybe that's, you know, that would be actually a perfect fit for us if we find somebody willing to be a part-time town planner for us here, that has the experience of having been a full-time planner elsewhere.
Right. I don't know how that works into the agreement with Spencer, because I thought the two were being joined in the thought that they could offer a full-time position.
But I mean, if we were able to get a situation where we could get a part-time planner just for Dudley.
Interim, okay.
Why wouldn't we, in the interim, do something like that, just, just so we have something?
All right, well.
It's no different than what Central Mass Regional Planning was doing for us.
Well, what they did to us, for us, okay. In any event, maybe that person will indicate their interest, and hopefully they are as and hopefully they are as qualified as you, you understand them to be, and that would be great. Uh, certainly that background and some years' planning would be helpful. Uh, moving along, uh, we had a question some time ago regarding A and R checklist. It's indicated on the agenda as checklist update. Mr. Wetroba, I know we had, um, reached out to town council, I believe, with a question?
Yep, so, um, what I want to do is I want to keep this as a place marker, um, for the next meeting. And, uh, the reason why is because I just got some answers back from town council. I participated in a phone meeting yesterday with a member of town council and got a lot of the answers we're looking for, but I'd like to, I'd like to put that into writing and, uh, because I'm not feeling well the past couple of days, um, I haven't had a chance to do that. So I just want to give them a little more time, uh, quantify the answers that I was given from town council, share them with the board and then we can talk about what kind of action we may or may want to, want to take. So that's, that's all I've got for tonight, all of that.
Did you share the email that you have right now, though?
No, I didn't get an email. I got an email back from town council, David, informing me that it would be better if we spoke on the phone, so that's what I did. I don't have a transcription of that entire phone call, so I can't help you with that.
I thought you had an email. Sounded like you said you had an email.
Okay. Well, to be continued.
I received, I received a response. I said, I received a response from town council. Response wasn't email. That said, call me and we can talk about this.
Moving on. All righty, we're going to hold on that and we'll see it at our next meeting, hopefully. Standard Business Discussion Status Report on Finishing Construction of and Acceptance of Uncompleted, Unaccepted Subdivision Streets Including. Do we have any information regarding Pierpont? No?
So I, I've got a little bit on, uh, Pierpont. So, um, at the last meeting, uh, we had instructed, uh, Jacefa to, um, reach back out to Tony Sekera because she had told us that, uh, Mr. Sekera was interested in moving forward with closing out the subdivision. I had a chance, uh, come to find out, nobody contacted Mr. Sekera after that initial contact. So, um, I reached out to him and, um, he explained the situation to me. Uh, he actually tried to get the first two phases and part of Phase Three of that subdivision over there accepted by the town back in like 2020. So what ended up happening was, I know it's kind of ancient history, so we never remember all this stuff, but we actually sent it over to the Board of Selectmen and what ended up happening at the Board of Selectmen meeting was they declined to bring it to town meeting because at the time, one of the selectmen, um, made an argument saying that he no longer wanted to allow subdivisions to be accepted in phases, that he wanted to force developers that if they have a multi-phase project going, they have to complete all phases and get to the point where all three phases are completed before they can go to town meeting. So that is why that died. So that's why Mr. Sekera's position is, he paid the fees back then, he submitted an ASB build back then and it didn't go anywhere. So now he wants to know how he can pursue it. So when I talked to him about it, he explained to me that the ASB build was for everything that was completed at that time. So I explained to him, well, the first thing that's going to need to happen is he's going to need to have his engineer update the ASB build to show everything that's completed and, you know, all, all three phases, so to speak. And then, um, when I asked him what was left to be done, he said the one sticking point he has right now is there's one street light that he needs to put in and the reason why he hasn't put it in yet is because he's been waiting on a back order for the actual poll. So he's, he's short one light pole. And I did tell him about, uh, what Mr. Horn had mentioned about how he really would need to get all of this in by the end of January if he wanted to get it on the spring, uh, meeting, uh, town meeting. And he, he seemed to think that that probably wasn't going to happen unless, unless that poll order finally came in and he would immediately put it in and let us know. But right now, it's looking like he's not going to be able to make the deadline. But that's where we stand with that situation, that, that, that's why Mr. Sekera was reaching out and asking, you know, what, what he, what, what's he supposed to do next?
Okay.
So, uh, is any, anybody, any discussion on that or...
Just to thank you for taking the initiative and checking in with him because otherwise we would be, without any information this evening.
Couldn't we accept the road without the poll and then keep his money until the poll's in?
Well, I think what we heard is the Board of Selectmen won't take it unless it's complete.
Right, but he's waiting for the poll.
Well, I think that would be an issue again with the Board of Selectmen. Complete is complete. Uh, if, if they've already taken a stand on this and said, no, without completion, then I don't know why they reverse themselves.
All we can do is recommend it, that's it. We can't, yeah.
I, I guess my question too would be, can we even keep his money after it's been, you know, if we, if we, uh, send it to the Board of Selectmen as ready for acceptance by the town, I don't know whether or not we can legally keep his, his bond or, you know, his funds.
Well, this happened back in 2020, you said?
Well, 2020 was when he originally tried to get, uh, yeah, what was completed at that time, accepted.
Okay.
I, I forgot exactly which road it was. I think it was Noble Street, only went up so far. He hadn't built yet the, uh, I think there was Wetlands Crossing there or something.
Yeah, that sounds kind of familiar.
Yeah, it was a whole lot of engineering and a cul-de-sac at the end that wasn't done yet. So I mean, I, honestly, I think, I, I don't think it's going to be that much longer for him to get that light pole and I think he's just going to miss the cutoff of the spring meeting. But now we've changed the, uh, I think we changed a lot of the bylaw now, right? So now we can accept towns, uh, we can accept town roads in the fall also.
Yeah. That, that seems more likely for this situation. I, obviously that may change pretty quickly, but for the time being, I think it's on hold as far as we're concerned. Does anyone have any further thoughts? Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive. Nothing further from the residents up there, apparently. Lyons Estates, Sophie's Way.
So...
Oh, I'm sorry.
In regards to Lyons Estates, um, we asked Jacefa at the last couple of meetings to reach out so we could get an update on that. Uh, at the last meeting, I believe she said that she had tried contacting the engineer that was listed for the project and he had informed her that, um, he was no longer involved with the project. And then she was going to try and find out who was the engineer and I think at that point, I believe we had instructed her, I'm looking at my notes here, uh, thanks to Aura for the very detailed minutes because that's where I got a lot of these notes from. Um, but we had asked, uh, her to reach out to, uh, Tom Ravain, I believe. And apparently that did not happen. So, uh, I talked to Aura about this just a couple of, a few days ago and Aura just provided me with the contact information for Mr. Ravain. So, uh, with the board's approval, I would like to reach out to him directly like I did with Mr. Sekera and just, uh, talk to him about what's going on up there. But I guess I, what I'd like to know is, do we want him to come in and give us an update? Or do we want to, at this point, just go to Plan B, which is send the engineer back out there to see what the hell's going on?
I think we need him in here because that road's a mess every time it rains.
Okay.
Yeah.
It sounds like the sense of the board is that we'd like Mr. Ravain to come in if...
Okay, so then what I would like to do is I would like to contact Mr. Ravain and ask him to attend our February meeting if that meets with the board's approval.
Does any discussion on that thought? All right, it looks like the sense of the board is that we would ask that you make that contact and invite Mr. Ravain to join us in February. Thank you, Mr. Wetroba, for taking that on. Uh, Sophie's Way, uh, we've had the gentleman in here earlier regarding the A and R. I don't know if there's anything else pertaining to that?
So I just wanted to back up one second.
Oh, sure.
Because the other issue with, uh, things that were asked to be done at the last meeting, um, Mr. Horn actually brought up a good point. He asked, uh, the town planner to get an update on when the approval date, uh, approval dates for Lyons Estates, Legacy Landing will expire. And then I requested that we add on the Jesse Road one because I know that's another one that was... So, um, apparently none of that was done. So at this point, I would like to ask the board if we can instruct Aura, uh, as time allows, to just try and look up those dates for us so we can get, we can get an idea of where we, where we stand on when those are going to be expiring.
That was Legacy Landing and Jesse?
Legacy Landing, Jesse Road and was it Lyons Estates?
Lyons Estates.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Lyons Estates, Legacy Landing and, uh, Jesse Road, which I don't remember the name of that subdivision, but it's...
Okay.
Aura has indicated okay and that is okay with me and I think the rest of us are in agreement on that. A thumbs up from Mr. Redmondson. All righty. Uh, well, thank you again for, uh, at least finding out where we are with those as opposed to where we hope to be. Uh, Sophie's Way, I don't think we have anything further on that at this point. Inspections and actions associated with site plans, Legacy Landing, Country Club slash Country Club Acres? Country Club Acres? SEP Solar, Oxford Ave, J and D? I think we had a question, uh, in the minutes in regards to J and D as well.
JD and D, this is going to be my favorite one of the night. So, uh, pardon me for being so giddy. So at the, uh, at the last meeting, um, we instructed the town planner to ask the building inspector if he is aware that vehicles are being parked in the garage. I believe Mr. Durgan brought that to, uh, the board's attention at the last meeting and that's when we started talking about, well, what the heck's going on over there? I know we had one point further back, we talked about that somebody had noticed, I think Mr. Clark had noticed the building was for sale. And so what I ended up finding out, I reached out to the building inspector and, um, it turns out that, uh, what ended up happening was back on October 14th... Hold on a second, let me just look at my, uh, okay, on, on October 26th, I'm sorry, August 26th of this 2024, Graves Engineering met with the building inspector and I believe at that point, it might have still been Mr. Scanlon. And, um, the building inspector says he remembers it was very hot, which makes sense because I found out since it was August 26th, they did the site visit and at that point, um, Mr. Boeing Ames' recollection, the building inspector's recollection is that Jeff Walsh said it would be in order to issue the Certificate of Compliance because the work that needed to be resolved, the things that needed to be changed had been changed. So what blows my mind about this one is after that, uh, meeting took place, we've had subsequent planning board meetings where we keep asking, we kept asking, what's going on with JD and D, what's going on with JD and D? Meantime, it turns out that a certificate of compliance has already been issued, apparently. So as far as the applicant's concerned, he figures this is done. He thought this was resolved. But somehow we failed to get the message. And what really, um, really ticked my, my fancy here was, um, we actually had a meeting. Let's see, so I saw a letter from Aura dated December 30th letting the applicant to JD and D know that there were insufficient funds in the account to cover a bill from Graves Engineering. And the billing question was for the August 26th site review by Graves. And we actually had a meeting where we, during the meeting, we talked about, hey, what's going on with JD and D and instructed, uh, the town planner to get us information on it. And then at the end of that meeting, at the very end of the meeting, what do we do? We approve payment of the voucher for the site, the site visit back in August.
Twice.
And I missed it, we all missed it. And it said right in, I, I was like, well, maybe it didn't clarify what, what the voucher was for, but then I went back and I looked at the damn agenda and it's right on there. It says Oxford Ave. So I guess, uh, sum it up, the only problem I see right now is we need to make sure that, um, if Graves has not been paid yet for that invoice, we need to make sure that we inform the applicant that he needs to pay the difference because, uh, I think Aura's email had the amounts in there. It was 300 and some odd dollars was the invoice, but I think Aura, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't there only like five bucks left in the account?
There was $5.84 left in the account and I sent a letter to JD and D and they came in today with a check for, uh, to make up the difference and I deposited that with a treasure today. And I've got a voucher prepared, uh, for the board to sign because I do not have the authority to sign this. So they're here. If, uh, actually you approved this twice. Once in September and it was never submitted, again in October and it was never submitted. So when I found out that all of these vouchers and there were a handful had never been submitted for payment is when I realized that there wasn't enough money. And we've talked about Dudley Housing Authority, which we'll get to, and that's being handled. But, um, the check came today, that's the good news. The voucher's ready and it can get paid and the date for professional services was August 1st. Uh, field engineering, prepare for and attend construction completeness, site visit with town staff and developer and their mileage.
Dare I ask, does this close the book on JD and D?
That's not up to me, but I believe it does.
All right, all right, then we could, I'm sorry?
How do we, what do we have to do for these vouchers?
Well, just has to pay the voucher, I believe, so we can take them off for coming meetings. Thank you very much. Thank you, Aura. Thank you, Mr. Wetroba and, uh...
Did you want to see the voucher, uh, the bill also or just the voucher?
Who do we have? We had, we had...
This'll be the third time.
We had given the planner authorization to sign the vouchers, right?
Right, so we need to make a new vote to give Aura the authorization.
Apparently she wasn't aware that she had to submit the voucher, she told me, so...
Oh, okay, well, that's all well and good. All right, uh, at this point, I guess a motion would be in order if we wanted to.
We've already approved it, we just need to sign it.
Twice.
We just need to sign it, okay. How many signatures? We got two?
Two signatures will do it.
All right, you and Mr. Redmondson are handy, handy. All right, well, thank you. We've taken one off of our perpetual list.
Yes.
And... That'd make a good, made-for-TV movie, probably. Uh, Stevens Mill, I believe the, uh, selectmen are still planning to meet with the principals, I think it's the 20th summit of the month?
Yes.
And my only thought there would be that as many of us are able to attend that meeting, that might be, hopefully be very informative. Uh, Solar Project at the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, first of all, let's get back to that thought. Did we want to approve Aura as signing vouchers going forward?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we, uh, allow Aura Finn, um, to sign any vouchers that are needed to go out for the, uh, planning board in the future.
All right, motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and a second. Any discussion?
Would that, we have to prove them first, all right?
Right, after they're approved.
Uh, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? unanimous, unanimous, thank you. Okay, just continuing. Solar Project at the landfill, is any discussion or thoughts about Dudley Housing Authority in the grass?
Yes. Well, um, that was another...
Right, Aura?
Right. That was another one. Uh, we received, I found out that it hadn't been paid. This invoice is dated November 15th. But of course, the first thing I did... But of course, the first thing I did was look for the balances, the account.
Right.
And this was like $1,600 in the red.
$1,600.
$1,600, not including the $598.50 for this one. So Steve's helped, Steve reached out to Jeremiah Blankenbaker, who is the director at Dudley Housing Authority, and he initiated a phone conversation. So I went to the town accountant and she printed out all of the vouchers that the town had paid and what the balance was, and I scanned all those and I got them to Jeremiah. And he did reach back out to me today saying that he's still looking into it because he believes that Dudley Housing paid for a couple of these vouchers as well as the town. He thinks they were paid by both of us. So he's kind of looking through his invoices and he's going to get back to me so we can see where we're at. And then he, there's a balance owed, he would get in contact with us after he gets his board's approval to pay the money to the town to pay it. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Well, it sounds like.
He seemed pretty genuine during our phone conversation. I really believe that he intends to, you know, that he'll come through for us on this. But he basically explained to me, this is kind of like, he just came into this position now and this is thrown into his lap, and he's got to go to his board and explain why he's cutting checks. So he just wants to double-check and make sure that it isn't a situation of overbilling or that it was already previously paid. And it sounds like in one case, it may have been, but the short of it is, now we're on the right track. He's got the name of the individual that we need to deal with directly over there. And between Aura working with the accountant and getting the numbers to him, I think he's going to, will end up being able to resolve this issue.
Okay, well, thanks again to Aura for your digging and Steve as well. Looks like, as you've mentioned, it looks like we're closer to resolving this than we ever have been. So maybe another one taken off the list at the next meeting. Okay, planner's plate.
Planner's plate, well, I think we've pretty much covered everything that's going on. I am trying to, I'm having difficulty getting into the email in the planning office, so I reached out to Amanda Gage, the IT person today. She was busy, they're installing new phones in all the offices, but I'm sure she'll get back to me tomorrow so we can resolve that because I'd like to put in an automated message so when people do email the planner, they'll get a message going, we're currently without a planner. These emails will be checked periodically. If you have something that you urgently need to speak to us about, call Aura Finn at the conservation number so that way they'll have some person to contact.
There is something, as I recall, and this came up when we went through the debrief in regards to the grant application, there is a separate database or access point at which the planner was able to send forward information when we, our CMR PC and the planner used putting forth that grant. I don't have the reference to it right now, but I think I could find that for you. And it was something that Jaseepa didn't have initially, but she finally was able to resolve or to get into that. And it was some documents that were sent by Mr. Scanlon that were not part of the application per se.
Oh.
Supplemental information. Moratorium on the sewer situation came up, apparently. So let me see if I can dig that up for you because it has a specific acronym and I don't remember the, it's a collection of letters or something, but it's, it is there. And I don't know how you could get access to that other than, I'll have to go maybe through CMR PC because they seem to know the why and the way for of it. I'll get back to you.
Figure it out. The main concern is just that the public doesn't have access to, you know, if they call in or if they email, nobody's answering their emails.
Well, there's that and there's the phone number too.
The phone number. Maybe I can get something on the planning board website that indicates to call.
I think we might need something for town hall here in terms of the town administrator putting that out. You know, he is responsible for human resources and the functioning of this building and all departments, I believe, for him. I appreciate that you're willing to take on some of these tasks, and believe me, we would be at a loss without you. But some of this is above your pay grade, I suspect.
Oh, I'd say all of it's below there. But, you know, just trying to.
In terms of how things can be divided up or if there's any help that can be made or available from that office to yours, because we don't have a short-term solution, as you obviously know, so this may go on for a while. Anything else on the planner's plate?
No, just trying to play catch-up.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like you've done an admirable job. Thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. And with Steve, I keep calling him and bothering him because we do, I did get an email out to a person who owns property on Seven Village Street. She is looking to convert an existing garage into two apartments, and I had no idea what to really tell her, so we did some research and I went back and forth with Steve, and I did send her an email. ICC'd her builder saying that she needs to submit a minor site plan review with engineered plans, and I gave her the fees for that. And I said, if you have any questions, call me. I'll find out the answers. But yeah, it's been interesting, but people are still, they still have projects and they want to know what the process is, and I, I'm not a lot of help, but I'm trying.
Well, all we can do is hope that something will be resolved soon. Comments from the planning board? Mr. Durgan?
Nothing.
Mr. Edmondson?
I think I'm good.
And Mr. Horn? The only thing I would say again is thanks, Aura.
Oh, you're welcome.
Pitching in and helping us through for the time being. Comments from the audience?
What about me?
Oh, Sounds, oh, yes, forgot about you. All right, what about you?
I was waiting for my name to be called.
All right.
So just real quick, because you mentioned the sewer, the sewer moratorium. So again, last meeting, we instructed the town planner to reach out to the sewer commissioners and asking them to outline reasons for the moratorium and their expectations on when the issue was going to be resolved because it's holding up our, it could potentially be a problem for grants. I'm now learning that also was not done. And they actually met tonight at 6:30, they may or may not still be down the hall depending on how long their meeting takes. So we kind of missed the boat on that. But again, if the board wants to give me the leeway, I'll craft a letter and send it to the chair of the, well, actually to the board. We specifically, I think we said we want to send it to the whole board. So if you want me to do that, I'll do that.
All right, well, this is the board's pleasure, Mr. Wetrova's offer. Do we need that as a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that Mr. Wetrova could draft a letter and send it to the Water and Sewer Board to ask about the length of the moratorium and what the current situation is and what they see for future.
Okay, motion.
And my last comment of the evening is I just wanted to.
Excuse me, Mr. Wetrova, can we get a second on that motion, maybe and vote it, vote it first? We have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, motion made and seconded, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Mr. Wetrova, do you care to vote on that one?
I jumped in there, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Clark. I just wanted to thank Amanda and Aura for helping put together the Zoom so I could participate this evening since I'm out of commission as far as, because of the COVID situation, I am not allowed in the building.
Oh, okay, well, thank you for your presence.
Well, I was, I'm not saying I'm banned, I'm just saying it was a self-composed quarantine.
All right, the ban will come later, probably.
You're right.
Could I have clarification? Steve, did you vote on the motion to authorize you to draft a letter to the Water and Sewer or did you not vote on that?
No, I, I did not vote, I did not, I guess I'll recuse myself since I'm the one doing it, or does it matter?
Okay, four are in favor and one abstained.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, all righty, so moving along, we have approved 2025 meeting schedule and set next meeting date. And I have a calendar, so. The next meeting date indicated would be February 12th. Does everyone have that particular meeting schedule in sight?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2025 planning board schedule that was made up by Aura for us, basically listing the meetings, the meeting dates as the second Wednesday of every month. We obviously had it, the first one tonight on January 8th, next one would be February 12th, March 12th, April 9th, May 14th, June 11th, July 9th, August 13th, September 10th, October 8th, November 12th, December 10th. And then the caveat would be, we could also meet before any of the regularly scheduled town meetings if need be for zoning articles or anything like that on the warrant.
So we have that open-ended possibility that's always there. All right, we have a motion, we have a second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? All right?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, okay. Approval of consultant vouchers, payment of bills. We all sat on there?
We all sat on there.
Okay, all right, that's good, thank you. And other town notices? Yes, not at this time. Other correspondence? No, it's okay. If anyone would care to make a motion to adjourn, it might be in order?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting for the meeting for this evening.
Any second? Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Mr. Wetrova, and thank you for the Zoom folks.
Take care, Steve.
Thank you.